Where's Commissioner Flusher?
I want to see his first question. About. Yes, sir.
Oh, shoot.
And go to the bottom of here. Hey, Mike, I know.
We're going to go ahead and call the special call meeting to order. We're going to start with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the Armed Forces. That'll be followed by an invocation by Commissioner Lor, which will then be followed by a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Ehrman. If everybody will please rise.
Please join me in prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet in concert, not only with constituents but potential members of this wonderful agency. Our Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to protect us, put a hedge of protection around our law enforcement, our first responders, our schoolteachers, and everyone else that's involved in the activities of this wonderful, wonderful county. We say this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance to the greatest country in the world, the United States of America.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Commissioners. So point of housekeeping, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, we will move on to the county commission interview sessions with candidates for county attorney. Oh, yeah, well, I guess we could do that. So, we are going to have, we'll take public comment after Melanie Crawford's interview, so C. 0.5, I guess. That's where that will be, and then I will go over the public comment parameters when we get there. Doug, take it away.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate it. For the benefit of the record, my name is Doug Thomas. I'm an Executive Vice President with Strategic Government Resources, and I've been pleased and honored to work with all of you in the county and the recruitment of your successor county attorney position. So, today is the culmination of a multi-month process where we've advertised the position. You've had a chance to look through and evaluate candidates, ultimately get down to semifinalists, kind of peel the onion skins back a little bit further from each of those candidates, and then ultimately to the two finalists that you're interviewing today. So, for the benefit of the audience that's here or may be watching as well, all these candidates have gone through a pretty rigorous process to get to this stage. You've seen the results of that. I apologize in advance for all the reading material we've given you, but we know this is one of your two hires that you have, the county administrator and the county attorney. So, we think it's appropriate, you get to know these candidates as best as possible as you go through a very important decision that you come through today. So, for the benefit of the audience and those that may be watching, the candidates have participated in a fairly extensive questionnaire where they provided background and their history and their style and their management style and their experiences relative to the issues they would likely face here. I've also participated in some pre-recorded video interviews. As they prepared for this process, they have also gone through a process called a first year game plan where they've outlined to you how they would get their arms around this position if they were appointed as the successor county attorney, additional normative kind of perspectives about that approach. We've also asked them to provide a variety of writing, legal writing samples. You could see their style and the type of work that they've been involved with as well. And then, leading to this afternoon's interview, we had an opportunity for all of you to spend at least forty-five minutes with each of the candidates individually, so you get a chance to get to know them a little bit better. We just finished up a lunch meeting with the county attorney staff so that the candidates had a chance to mingle with the staff and vice versa as well. And that culminates into this afternoon's process where you'll be actually spending some time as a board interviewing your two finalists. What we try to do, we've scheduled an hour meeting for each, whether you take the full hour or it goes a little longer, a little less, that's, this is your time with these candidates to make sure that you're comfortable and that you've explored and kicked the tires and understand what all they bring for your position here. I do like to try to provide the candidates a chance to ask you as a board, maybe have around ten to fifteen minutes worth of questions at the end, so if we're in this process of about an hour interview, somewhere around the forty-five minute mark, if we're going in that area, if need be, I'll try to give you a heads up that we'd like to provide the candidate a chance to ask you some questions as part of this process as well. So, from your background, you've gotten their cover letters, their resumes, their questionnaire. You've obviously seen the interview processes. You've seen various media reports that we provided you, and then also this afternoon completed the reference checks on all the candidates. So, hopefully that kind of gives you a snapshot of everything that's out there that we're aware of through these, through these two candidates. What we anticipate, for our experience in working with a group of this size and candidates of this nature, that for an hour, you're going to get probably about ten to fifteen questions that you'll be able to be involved with. And so, what we've tried to do is I've given you more questions, obviously you'll be able to add or ask during that window that you could use for your one-on-ones or for this interview process. But what we try to do is if you've all kind of circled eight to ten questions or so of those that you think would be appropriate to ask, what I normally do is just ask each of you to give me the numbers of those questions, and then I can quickly tabulate which ones three, four, or five of you might have asked, and we can kind of work our way through it, and that helps you get to a prioritized approach. So, my goal here is to get you around somewhere to ten to fifteen questions that you would likely be asking these candidates. Now, that being said, certainly in the context of response to questions, that you, there may be something that you have a follow-up question or one or more of you have, that's certainly fair game as well. You certainly feel free to use your protocol through the chair or whatever to ask for any of our clarifications or for more information, or if you have something that's related that you'd like to talk through. This is really your time with the candidates in addition to the time you had earlier today. So, before I go through the questions that each of you have, is everybody comfortable with that process? Any questions that you've got or anything I can do to help fill in the gap before we try to get to a prioritized list of questions for your candidates?
Commissioners, are you good? All right.
Okay. All right. Well, if that's the case, I'll take in whatever order, Chairman Chair, you'd like. If anybody wants to just start giving me each commissioner what their top ten or fifteen questions are, I'll just start to capture those and then give me a second to tabulate them and tell you where I think we're going to land.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to start?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thank you. So, I'm just reading off the numbers.
That's fine.
Twelve, fourteen.
Oh, give me a sec here just to catch up. Twelve, fourteen.
Twelve, fourteen, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-nine, thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
Hang on, I got, twenty-nine, I'm with you.
Okay.
I got to twenty-nine. What's next?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, okay.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. I'm with you.
Forty-six and forty-seven.
Forty-six, forty-seven, okay.
Fifty-four, sixty, sixty-five, seventy, seventy-one, and eighty. That's fifteen.
Seventy, seventy-one, and eighty.
Eighty, yes, thank you.
Gotcha. Super, thank you. Okay. Okay, who wants to go next?
Ready?
All right.
Question one, two, four. Question twenty. Fifty-six, sixty, sixty-one.
Fifty-six, sixty, and sixty-one, you said? Yes. Okay.
Those are pretty much the same for the other, and I also have four questions that I've.
Do you want to pick up? We can, we'll catch those in a sec then. Okay, that's fine. All right. Super. Who wants to go next?
fifty-nine, sixty-one, and eighty.
Okay, great, thank you.
One, two, twelve, fourteen, thirty-eight, forty-eight, fifty-two.
With you, fifty-two.
All the rest were covered.
Okay. All right.
Sixty-four.
And fifty-four?
Sixty-four.
Oh, sixty-four, I'm sorry.
Six-four, sir.
Six-four, six-four, thank you. Okay.
Want to throw in seventy-three?
I'll take what you got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Do we have everybody? Did we get all five? Or not? No. Still, I'm for Daryl. I'm sorry. Yeah, okay.
Actually, I've got other questions that I think are more relevant than these somewhat boilerplate questions, but to go along with that, I'll say four, twelve, fifteen, thirty, fifty-four, fifty-five, and sixty.
I'm sorry, after fifteen, what was the next one, Commissioner?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-five, fifty-nine, and sixty. And I think probably more important, this body, or, yeah, we have eighty questions here that are somewhat, as mentioned, boilerplate. So, I don't know how much value we're going to give those, but I think we should concentrate on the more specific questions that we have, specific to Indian River County. I don't know when that opportunity is going to be, perhaps.
Let me get a sense of, if, I'm sorry, let me get a sense of kind of where you were collectively and some of the ones that were high, that multiple three or four of you had asked for, and then that'll give us an idea of how many of those questions we've got, and then we can talk through, a number of you said you had some other particular questions, we can talk through those. So, if you, just give me one second to give you a sense of where your kind of high priority questions came, and then we can talk through the other ones. Okay. All right, so that gives us, one, two, one. Okay. So, there were five questions that three or more of you had identified, so I'll circle, identify those first. That was question number one, question number two, question number twelve, and question number sixty. Those had three or four responses. So, if my math was right, I think that's five questions. So, that gets you at least started with at least of interest of what you've said as a group. That also gives you another, potentially up to ten questions, probably two apiece that each of you could ask that would be potentially different, above and beyond the ones that you've identified.
So, why don't we do this, because that's kind of what we did for the administrator, is we'll ask them all the same four questions or five questions?
Five questions, yep.
Was it one, two, twelve?
One, two, twelve, fourteen.
Fourteen.
And I think there was one more. Yeah, I think it was sixty, as I recall.
Okay.
Sixty, yes, that's correct. So, there was to be five, yep.
So, we'll ask them those five questions, and then we'll let each commissioner ask two of their own questions.
That works?
Does that work? Does that work for everybody? Well, I don't, I mean, if you want to ask.
Make it count.
I've got two more than two.
How many do you have?
Six right now.
Okay. I'll give you my two questions.
Okay.
I'll give you one.
I think that's fine. I mean, I'll, I'll start, I'll, I'll start out asking the standard questions, and then...
Somebody answer themselves.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that work?
Does that work? It's okay with me. Is it okay with all of you? Are you comfortable with that format?
As long as we can follow up.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. As I said, you've got, you've got two candidates, so if you take a little longer, that's certainly understandable. This is your time with the candidates to make sure you're comfortable. It's an important decision. So, so, we're going to be looking at probably fifteen-ish, sixteen-type questions, subject to follow-up questions, is what I think I'm hearing you say. I'm just trying to get an idea so I can keep track as the process goes forward. So, all right, so, I'll assume, I'll keep track of those numbers as we go further. If, I do want to provide, as I mentioned at the beginning, a chance for the candidates to maybe ask some questions at the end as well. So, if you want to just make sure we build that into the process, if you, do you want me to stand up to say, hey, we're about an hour into the session or forty-five minutes into the session? How would you like me to do that, Chair?
Yeah, give us a forty-five minute wave.
Forty-five minute wave, okay, gotcha. At least you got an idea to work through it. Okay? That all work? Okay. So, if you're good, I'm more than glad to go up, and if you're ready to go and bring our first candidate down.
Bring the first one in.
Great, okay, super. All right. Any other last questions for me before I step aside?
I think we're good to go.
All right, thank you. All right.
All right, good afternoon. So, I know we all had the pleasure of individual interviews this morning, so we wanted to take the opportunity to do some group interviews.
Okay.
So, I'm going to start out with a couple of questions from the group as a whole, and then each commissioner is going to have the opportunity to ask specific questions from themselves.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so the first question is, please describe why you think you are an excellent match for this position.
I think that I'm a good candidate for this position because I have a lot of widespread local government experience. I've worked in both the private and the public sector. I've been, I've done every job there is to do really in a county attorney's office. I've been an assistant county attorney, deputy assistant, now I serve as a county attorney. So, I've done litigation defense for local governments. Now, I work for a variety of local governments also as clients, so I just think it's, gives me a really wide perspective and a lot of excellent experience to offer you.
Fantastic. What have you done to perfect, to prepare for the Indian River County County Attorney interview, and why do you want to work for us?
Okay. Well, I know that you've been researching me and I've been researching you. I was very intentional about applying for this job. I don't have my resume spread out all over the state. Indian River just seems like a really good fit for me based on my background. I worked for nine years at Bay County, Florida, which is similar in size to Indian River and similar in their economy. So, I'm drawn to your area because, well, first of all, I'm, I'm happy to be the county attorney for Liberty. I have a lot of affection for my county, but I'm looking for a bigger position with more responsibilities. I'm drawn to your county because it's beautiful, because you care about growing it in a responsible way, because it has a lot of natural charm, and I'm excited about the fact that you're doing a lot of strategic planning, which is, and that you're a forward-thinking organization. So, as someone looking for a new opportunity, that's something that really appeals to me.
Fantastic. All right. Tell us about the most difficult citizen encounter you have experienced, and how did you handle it?
Well, I think I put this in my application materials, but I used to be the dangerous dog prosecutor for Bay County, which was a pretty tough job because people feel really passionate about their animals. So, you know, I had some pretty hard cases, one in particular that got, it was just really ugly, but you know, I just tried to keep perspective on it, and, you know, working in local government, sometimes you're going to deal with difficult people. You can't take it too seriously. You can't take it home with you. You've just, just got to try to do the best you can to be professional.
Thank you. How, or, describe a time when you were met with strong resistance to a change you implemented, and how did you overcome it?
Well, I'm not sure I would say strong resistance, but one of the reasons I took the job as Liberty County Attorney was the opportunity to make some really fundamental changes in their organization, trying to help them grow. So, one of the things that I've worked on is getting them codified. I, I put together a code enforcement program for them, and I, there's just a lot of resistance in my small county to change and to kind of grow up as an organization, but I think I've just done it incrementally and tried to bring my word along, and ultimately, I, you know, I was able to build a code enforcement program from the ground up. I drafted a nuisance and code enforcement ordinance. They'd never had one there before. I put out an RFP to hire a special magistrate. I did an interlocal with the sheriff's office to hire a code enforcement officer. So, I think it's been incremental. It's taken us about three years. That was one of my fundamental goals when I came on board, and gradually, people are getting more comfortable with it.
Fantastic, thank you. And the last question for me, do you take the time to educate county commissioners and departmental staff about the legal implications and circumstances when you are asked to provide your legal opinion on a matter, and if so, how do you accomplish that?
I do. I think it's important to communicate regularly with your county leadership and each commissioner, and brief them one-on-one with, on important legal issues. So, I, I do it both in a one-on-one context, and the other thing that I put in my first year plan... And the other thing that I put in my first-year plan that I'd like to start doing if you hire me is to do a weekly update to commissioners about what the county attorney's office is working on. And it doesn't have to be long, but I, I think it's important to keep you all informed about the progress we're making on certain projects that are important to you, maybe some legal issues that you need to be aware about, maybe some changes in the law that I, that we think we're, is gonna impact Indian River and how it, how you need, why you need to be thinking about it and how it affects us. So, I do try to use those different types of tools to communicate.
Fantastic, thank you. Alright, we'll start, I guess we can start with Commissioner Moss and work our way down.
Alright, thank you, Madam Chair. I had three questions, you've already answered one.
Okay.
The first question of the remaining two is, why did you choose the public sector versus the private sector for your career?
I, I was raised by two public sector employees. My dad worked for the federal government and we moved around the country for his job. My mom was a schoolteacher. I come from a family of schoolteachers. My brother served in the military. I just, there's a lot of public service in my family, so for me, it just seemed like a natural field to go into. I have approached it from different perspectives, though. I've worked for local governments, both through private law firms and also been in-house counsel. So, I think that's kinda helped me just offer more to my clients because I have those different perspectives.
And the second question, you, you mentioned it just briefly, could you speak about the first-year plan? If you were to be hired?
Right. So, in the first-year plan, I really kind of tried to start with what I thought was the most, would be the most important things for me to do, which is to really get to know the county attorney staff. I mean, my main, my, my, my main job is to come in and be the, the lead for that organization. So, really to take the time to get to know those employees, to meet your county manager more and your department heads and start to understand how I can best work with them, meet with you commissioners each individually and learn more about your districts, more about your vision for the county, and then start to move outward and start to meet some, maybe some of your, your, the city attorneys that we partner with, our local government partners, our economic development partners, and just sort of gradually, incrementally, get to know your county, tour your county facilities. As I said, I'd like to start implementing those weekly updates and some sort of consistent communication, but also, you know, ways to inform you of the work that the county attorney's office is doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Yerem?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I may even follow up on one of my questions with what Commissioner Moss just asked you. But my first question is about relationships with the county administrator and his top, his top staff. You two are the only two employees that work directly for this board. And to me, it's important to have that relationship. What is, what is your feelings about that? And how important is it to you? And what goals do you see with having a relationship, a good relationship? Or are you in a great relationship with our county administrator and his top staff?
I think it's really critical for the county attorney to work closely with the county manager. And I've had success in my career having really positive, productive relationships with county managers. So, it's important to me to have a good communication with my county manager, to understand what he or she, how they best want me to communicate with them, but also communicate with their department heads. Because, let me be clear, I understand what the role of the county attorney is. It's not my job to run the county, it's the county manager's job to do that, and I respect that. I would work hard to have a open and honest communication with my county manager because we have different roles in the organization, so we're not always going to see things the same way. And so, I would want to really work hard to have that good relationship and dialogue so that I can communicate when I have a, a concern about something and give them a heads up. But certainly, I, I agree that it's critical to have that good relationship.
When you don't agree, you, maybe you and the county administrator, even with commissioners, maybe don't like what we're hearing from the county attorney on a certain thing, how do you, how do you handle that?
You know, I try to be positive and, and professional about it. There's no sense taking things personal. I, I sure don't. A lot of the advice that I have to give as a county attorney, sometimes it's uncomfortable to hear. Sometimes I'm giving it in a public setting. I'm not, I'm not a bomb thrower. I try to be professional about how I present myself. So, if there's times where we disagree, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna give you, my job is to give you my best counsel, my honest advice. I try to be sensitive in how I deliver that because I know we work in a political environment. But I don't take it personal if you don't take, you know, if you don't like what you're hearing. It never needs to get ugly.
Are you willing to help our other constitutional offices such as the supervised elections, tax collector, property praiser, clerk of the court, or chair, if asked?
If, if my board asks me or directs me to do it, and I think it's in the county's best interest to do it, there have been points in my career where I helped other constitutional officers. But I understand that they are separate consti, I, I understand their roles and also that through the budgeting process, sometimes it's better that they have their own counsel, obviously, for how they run their offices. But certainly, there's times when we're all working together in the best interest of the county, and I'm happy to work with them and see how I can assist.
Last question is, relationships and working with the cities, especially their legal counsel, where do you place that on your importance?
I think it's really important. You know, there's always gonna be tension between the county and the city. But I think it's critical that you treat your cities and your towns as your partners. We're all in our, you know, we're all in the county together and we need to see how we can work together productively. We, you know, there's lots of tools to do that from a legal perspective, interlocal agreements. I would certainly, one of my things I put on my first-year plan, as I mentioned, would be to personally reach out to all the city attorneys, town attorneys, introduce myself and, and see how we can work together. It sounds like you are really laying the groundwork already, though. I heard that you're doing those joint city-county meetings, which I think is great. So, certainly to the extent that I can help produce those productive relationships or help improve them, I think that's the right, right move.
Alright, Commissioner Wester.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not unlike any other jurisdiction, we are going through some growth angles, concerns, challenges, whether it be annexation or we're looking at the urban service boundary. We're looking at individuals having property rights and challenges and concerns as well as some other property line issues. Can you talk about how your thought process to address that and what experience you have?
Okay. I, I think, well, I know that as you do your strategic planning, I know one of the things you're looking at is you're doing an urban services boundary study, which I think is really important. And a lot of planning on maybe sewer water capacity. I know you've got a septic-to-sewer challenge going on. And, and it sounds like you're approaching it in a good way, which is you're trying to leverage grants to help people individually do those things. At a certain point, you may have to make people do those things. So, you, you know, there's, there's legal tools to, to do that if you get to that place. My job as county attorney is to try to keep you advised about what people's property rights are, to help you make sure that they get due process as you go through these types of growth situations, to try to help you find some good flexible tools, legal tools, to try to address these, these growth challenges you're having.
Okay, so if I were to re, recouch it to where, if you knew that historically this board would not want to get into the overpossessiveness or taking, would that have changed any matter? Because you said it, it might change if, depending upon the direction that we would go. If you knew the direction.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to understand your, are you, are you talking about the use of eminent domain?
Yes.
Okay. You know, that is really a last resort.
For us, too.
Yeah. No, no one wants to do that.
No.
And it's, it's a last resort because, first of all, you want to try to negotiate to get with the property owner to make it a win-win. It's also a last resort because it's incredibly expensive to go through that process. Yes, you can take property, but, and you can do it quickly, but you end up having to pay attorney's fees for the people that you're dealing with. So, it, not only is it too expensive, it's really not something that fosters good relationships necessarily with your citizens. But, you know, as you grow, sometimes it is a necessity. I have some experience with eminent domain.
Thank you. I know we, we talked upstairs, as we all did. Can you talk a little bit about 119, what it means, where it belongs? Does it belong in the attorney's office? Does it belong in responsiveness to the, the individual? Realizing that any, any FOIA request can happen anywhere at any time in the building at any one location.
Okay. I think I mentioned that I have for the last three, well, throughout my career, I've, I've presented a lot of sunshine public records law presentations. The last three years, I've taught those three-hour ethics trainings to local government officials. So, I have a lot of background in public records. One of the things that I talk about first when I go through my trainings, whether I'm talking with an elected official or I'm talking with a county staff member, is that we have to remember when we're talking about public records that, public records, it's both a constitutional and a statutory right of Floridians. So, it's not a burden to, to us. Sometimes they're difficult to deal with, but it's our duty to do it. But having said that, that doesn't mean we get to get ran over either. I mean, our obligation with public records is to respond promptly. And then we have a reasonable amount of time to produce the records that we have that are not exempt. And if people make huge requests, we have the ability to charge special service fees, if that's necessary. I always try to work with people to see if I can narrow their requests so that, you know, they're asking for the moon, but really, they're really looking for this little thing. I don't want to have people feel like I'm trying to hide something for them or make it hard for them. I try to, I try to work with them to get them the records that they're entitled to. It sounds like Indian River County is smart because you've already utilized, you're utilizing JustFOIA, which, when I was leaving Bay County, I made the recommendation to our, to the county to, to get JustFOIA. And that is good because now you don't have people walking all over your buildings, making public records requests to all your employees. They're being streamlined into a program that can document them as they come in, handle them in a routine way, have your custodian of records really be that main point of contact. So, it sounds like you've got a good approach. It may just need some fine tuning. I have a lot of experience overseeing public records requests, so I'm happy to work with staff.
What have, what have the courts determined was a reasonable and customary time for turnaround or response?
They really haven't. I mean, they say reasonable, but it depends on what the ask is. So, you know, if it's a really large request, it could take a bit of time to put it together. If it's something simple, there shouldn't be any reason why you, and it's, and it's something that's not exempt, there's some, it shouldn't be hard to get it out fairly quickly. It just depends on what's being asked for is what's reasonable.
What does it mean to you, counselor? God variety, three pieces of, of document that, that are easily found?
Yeah, I mean, it should take maybe forty-eight hours at most. I, I don't know, it depends on how many requests you've got coming into your system, how quickly you can process them. But certainly, you should be able to turn around a simple public records request really quickly. It sounds like your county attorney staff, and I do think it should be in the county attorney's office because there's a lot of legal questions that go into our public records law. There's lots of exemptions. Sometimes it's not just exempt, it's confidential. There's redactions that have to be made. So, you do have to be really careful about it, but certainly, it's an easy request. Hopefully, you can get it out quickly.
What's the number one challenge that you see we're confronted with after you've studied all of us and, and this great county that we represent? What's the number one challenge that you're gonna have to work hard on if you're selected?
I think that you are kind of on the cusp of, of growth that you can't avoid. It's, I've read that, I see you're at about one-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand people, but you're estimated to grow to two-hundred-and-ten-thousand people by 2050. So, right now, your biggest challenge, I think, is planning for that growth. I think you're doing a great job because, like I said, you're doing your urban boundary study. You're, I'm sure you're doing water sewer capacity studies. So, I think, and I, and I, when I mentioned that, one of the things that draws me to your county is because you're beautiful, you've, you're charming, you want to keep that, those characteristics in your county. So, the way that you choose to grow, where you choose to grow, how you maintain your community character, those are, that's really gonna be your challenge as these growth pressures hit you. I'm sure none of you wanna see a bunch of unplanned sprawl. I'm sure none of you wanna hear, get phone calls from developers frustrated because that you, you know, we hadn't planned for the utilities or the capacity that they need. So, I do think that's one of your biggest challenges right now.
County attorney's office is, is a practice. It's limited, it has five bosses. But generally, you've met most of the staff, if not all of the staff. You, you have to, if selected, you have to, or appointed, you have to orient yourself with that staff and see their strengths and weaknesses. How long do you think it'll take before you know exactly what you have and what you have to add and what you have to maybe change a little bit? Well, how long of a time period would you want to give it or you would feel comfortable with?
I mean, I, I certainly think within the six, first six months of being employed as county attorney, I can really get my arms around who's doing what, what is the workload. That gives me plenty of time to not only sit down with everyone in the county attorney's office, get to know them, understand what they're working on, but start to try to assess what our strengths and weaknesses as a, as a functioning office is. So, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking as far as a timeframe of understanding whether, what kind of additional resources we need or what we can take on that, that maybe we farmed out. I think I, within the first six months, I can get a sense of that.
Thank you for thinking that we're all near-perfect, but in the real world, we're not. And if you're sitting in that seat and we are discussing things, when, when do you flip the switch? When do you say, hey, wait a minute, timeout? Or do you wait until after the meeting's over, then go upstairs and say, that was a bad call?
No.
Do you have the strength to go forward when necessary, when it's live?
Absolutely, I, I mean... I mean, I don't mind speaking up when necessary to give you my thoughts on something, because it's critical that you hear from me as you go through your decision-making process. Having said that, I'm not out to throw bombs or, you know, beat up my commission if I think you're doing the wrong thing. I mean, if I give you my advice and you decide not to take it, that's your prerogative, you as a board or my client. I'm going to speak up and tell you, but I'm not going to belabor it if you choose not to take my advice.
So it's up to us to fall down the stairs or just jump?
Excuse me?
It's up to us to fall down the stairs or just jump?
That's right, but I'll let you know.
But you're going to caution us and be a handrail?
That's, that's my job.
That's what I want to hear. Thank you. I yield.
Madam Chair, thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Can you briefly describe one of your achievements in the Florida bar certified in city, county, and local government, and what a task that was to complete, if it was? And what set you apart from other candidates that may or may not have that outline?
Okay. It was a lot of work to become board certified. One of the things I talked about in my online interview was, one of my, I was pretty proud of that achievement because I had started the process to get board certified before Hurricane Michael hit my county, and it was a cat five, and it was crazy. But I, as soon as I could get my office, I picked back up and I kept studying, and I did pass on my first try. I think that process was great for me because I did a lot of extra education to get that certification. It forced me to sit down and get comfortable with some areas of local government law that I really wasn't comfortable with, because I hadn't had as much experience in it. So I do think whether or not a local government attorney chooses to actually become certified, cross that finish line, take that test, engaging in that certification process, going to those review classes, is really good at getting a strong, fundamental understanding of local government law. So I would highly recommend any county attorney in the office that I, that works in, under my direction, get involved in that process. I know you've got a county attorney working hard at it right now. And there's a lot of local government attorneys that don't bother, so you should be grateful to have that.
Right. So, in other words, it's almost as if taking the bar again.
It is.
And additionally, I believe before you can sit for that particular exam, you have to have some prerequisite time working in an industry and/or county or city government that would allow you the longevity to take that exam.
That's true, and you go through a peer review. So you, you have to have a certain experience level, you have to take all those extra hours, and then you go through a review of your peers before you take that test.
Right. I appreciate that. And your nine years in Bay County and your subcontracting work with other municipalities certainly positions you well to have that specific addition, additional certificate. Moving to short-term rentals, I think Bay County obviously is a tourist-happy community, similar to, not to the extent of Indian River County. What's your experience with short-term rentals and the Florida Legislature's recent preemption?
It's not a super recent preemption, but my understa, so generally, local governments are preempted from regular, regulating vacation rentals unless you had that ordinance, I think it's 2011 or before. I don't think Indian River has that on the books. So, but, but vacation rentals, even though you're preempted to, there are, you have tools to deal with them because they can still be a nuisance in your community. So the ways that you can handle short vacation rentals under this preemption is you, you certainly have your building, you know, they still have to meet life safety codes, they have to meet building regulations. If they cause a nuisance, you're not, there's nothing that stops you from addressing them through your nuisance code or through law enforcement. So, I mean, you still have some tools to deal with vacation rentals, but when you're preempted, you're preempted. I've learned that lesson the hard way. Bay County and Panama City Beach tried to kind of delve in an area that was preempted and got, we got slapped down in the first DCA. So I, you know, and there's penalties if you try to regulate in an area where you're preempted. So you've got to know what you can do.
If you were selected as the next county attorney, and we've seen your outline and your timeline on some of your objectives, what would be one of your primary concerns on how to reduce any expenditures for outside counsel that may not be your or your staff's specialty? Let's say it's some type of specific environmental issue or whatnot. What, what method would you use to limit the amount of external dollars that we're spending on outside counsel?
You know, I think I've mentioned when I met with you each individually that I think you have adequate staff in your county attorney's office to handle your day-to-day affairs. We're your general counsel. You don't really have a large staff. It's when you get into those larger counties that you're going to have more, the litigation department, the real estate department, et cetera, et cetera. Your county, the three people that you have are really trying to manage your day-to-day work. But having said that, I do understand that people are concerned about the cost of outside counsel. And one of the things I put in my first-year plan was a willingness to sit down and look through all those contracts and see if there's some areas that we can do a little bit more of that legwork. I have some, there's certainly some litigation that I think the county attorney's office can, can pick up if they're not. I'm not quite sure how much we're doing, but there are some routine litigations that should be able to be handled. So, you know, I commit, I know, I understand that's an issue of contention. I commit myself to look at it. I don't promise that I won't come back and tell you, hey, we really need this outside counsel. The one thing I've also said to most of you, because I've gotten this question, though, is I think it's a county attorney's job to tell you when I, when I think you're wasting legal money, when I think you're fighting a battle or a case that isn't a good winner for you. So, you know, sometimes we don't want to hear it, but I do believe that's my role, would be my role.
Appreciate that. We talked briefly about your experiences with 119 public records, Sunshine and the like. Have you had an experience throughout your career of particular individuals and/or organizations that consistently make public records requests? And you mentioned earlier about redaction, about the promptness of doing it. Have you had a situation where you've actually sat down with those individuals or those groups and had discussions about how could we perhaps lessen the volume of public records and/or solve issues, obviously ethically and legally, other than binding up personnel with consistent, lengthy public records requests?
I've had one-on-one interactions with people who are persistent public records, people who are persistently seeking them. I think that, you know, there's some people or groups that you're just, they're just not going, they're not going to be satisfied. But generally, it's been my experience that the people that are making a large public records request, repeated public records request, is they're frustrated or they're angry about an issue. And I think if you deal with them consistently and you try to work with them to try to get to the bottom of what they're really looking for, and, and you ensure them that you understand that they have a right to records, if they're not exempt records. I've found that working with people over and over, at a certain point, that they get a little bit more comfortable that you're really not trying to hide something. So there's some people you're never going to make happy, but I'm, I certainly have a lot of experience sitting down with people or groups and just, over time, working through their public records requests, and I've found that they normally start to calm down when they figure out you're not trying to be their enemy.
Right, thank you. You have some experience in dealing with FEMA in the Bay County area after a few storms and the long and arduous task it took to get the dollars back from the federal government. Can you briefly talk about that? And I have one further follow-up after that, Madam Chair.
Okay. I mean, you know, your frontline people that are helping you after a storm is, are your, oftentimes, you have your disaster consultants. Your county attorney's usually working really closely with your disaster consultants. The writing example that I gave you was a case where I was able to finally win a second appeal in a FEMA dispute and get about half a million dollars back for my county. It took several years, but yes, I mean, we've been through this, all these natural disasters, and so we know upfront the things that we need to do to make sure that we're positioning ourselves for those dollars, making sure that we're following our procurement, our purchasing manual, that we're putting all those federal contract clauses and all those contracts that we enter into, get, putting together our, you know, getting all of our contractors up and in place, and then work, just systematically working through trying to get those FEMA reimbursements and fighting where there's, when you, we think we can win that fight. In that case, it's actually an example where there were two appeals going on. I handled that appeal because it seemed winnable, because I could see precedent for them funding something that I, that they'd funded before, and I thought they should fund for us, so I made those arguments. We had another appeal where we got an outside counsel because our fire department was just convinced that they were going to get a new fire station out of it, and I didn't see it at all. And it never happened, and I finally went to the county manager and said, we've got to stop spending money on this. We underinsured our asset, so.
I appreciate that, and I think other counties of the state appreciate you setting that standard. And finally, most recently, Liberty County with your, it's interesting, in Liberty County, only three counties in the state of Florida have the clerk of the court double as the county administrator, and Liberty County being one of those. And I understand by some of the documents I've read about your significant impact on what we would call the solid waste district here, and your approach on how you were able to refine that. Could you elaborate on that briefly, please?
Yes, so we actually entered into, I think, a really, I negotiated a beneficial franchise agreement with our solid waste provider. We kind of, because we're such a small county, we just don't have a lot of resources, so we sort of transitioned that billing out of our local government and into the private sector in a way that really kind of freed up some of our, our resources. So that was, that was definitely a win. We got a good service out of it, and we got, we freed up some really scarce resources in our county.
Right. And additionally, Liberty is so small, you've negotiated the contracts with all the other things that you would need from public works to, to inspections, to anything else. You know, you've negotiated all of those contracts within the county.
Yes, because, I mean, and it's hard for people in a local government structure like this to conceive how poor some fiscally constrained counties are. So they literally outsource their planner, their building official, their fire chief. And so, yes, I've had to negotiate all those professional contracts.
Thank you. I yield to the chair.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, any further questions? If not, we'll give Ms. Schiller an opportunity to ask any questions. I yielded mine to, you guys covered all the questions. Those were, yep, great question. Yep. Do you have any questions to ask?
I don't. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for being here. I'll turn it back over to Doug.
I know we have built in a break, but if you're good, we can, we, give you a chance to go up and get Melanie for your next.
Transition and...
Yeah, we'll take like a five-minute break while, or 10-minute while you go get Ms. Crawford and bring her down, and I think...
That worked? Okay, super.
All right, we're in recess for... All right, we're in recess for.
[inaudible][311.77]
And my mom was the city clerk. And, you know, anytime there was a cat in a tree or a loose dog or anything that went on in that little town, we, you know, received a phone call. And so I think, you know, I was young at that age and I just, my father had a big impact on my desire to be a public servant. And, you know, I've been a public servant now seventeen years. I've been a practicing attorney. This coming year will be twenty-five years. I did spend some time with the Lulich firm back in twenty-two, I want to say. And at that time, the plan was that we were going to try to create a branch of that firm that catered to the government client. In the meantime, I was contacted to become, to take the job that I'm in now. And I talked to Jordan and Steve about that and they supported my decision. So I'm back in public service. And to be honest, that's the lane that I belong in.
Thank you. What appeals to you most about this particular position and this county?
Well, first of all, I live here. So, you know, as opposed to being, working for someone, you know, in another county, which I have done, the decisions that this board make affect myself and my family. So to have a role in being able to do the right thing, to be a good public servant and to make decisions that bode well for the future of the county is very important to me.
And we did have a submission by you of your first-year plan. Could you speak to that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. And this is the first time I've had the opportunity to write down, you know, a plan for the first year. So obviously, it's subject to, you know, things that could come up later. But, you know, my initial plan would be to listen to all of you, to the taxpayers, to the department heads, to the staff. I know, you know, we might need to tweak and address, you know, just procedures and policies as to how things are being done. We would want to make sure everyone in the legal office, you know, is in the right spot as far as what they enjoy doing and if they need support or help, you know, I would definitely want to make sure that I accomplish that. I think I indicated, you know, as the months progressed, there's a desire to transition from a paper legal system, so to speak, to a digital one. And I've done that on two prior occasions. So, you know, to me, that's, that would be easy. The public records function here at the county, I would really take a pretty good look at that. And, you know, I learned today that the staff is utilizing a relatively new program. I forgot what they call it, to be honest, with the FOIA something. And would want to take a look at that and just make sure that, that we are efficiently responding to requests and needs that come in the legal office. You know, in a few strategic plans that I've participated in in the past, you know, I think the role of the county attorney's office here, as any other attorney would be the case, is that you need to make the organization more efficient. So I would, in my first year, would want to look at ways that, you know, if we haven't been efficient and responsive, that we do that. Another thing is, I know you guys are working on your strategic plan, but you've already identified some goals. And one of those is to be customer service friendly. Now, historically, through my government career, I can say that the notion of the attorney's office being customer service friendly may not, you know, they may not, those two things might not go together in some people's minds. But I think that's very important because I think it's important to help folks understand, you know, why things are the way they are and just provide any assistance that we can provide with information that is legally appropriate for us to do.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ehrman?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Melanie, welcome.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
We spoke briefly on this today and I would ask you again, how important the relationship with the county administrator and his top staff from, from your point of view, from the county attorney, who are the only two basically employees of the Board of County Commissioners?
Madam Chair. If I can speak out of order, that we can overhear the gentleman two rows, three rows behind the candidate speaking and it's rather disruptive. Maybe if you want to move back a few rows, but it's, can't be comfortable for the candidates and it certainly isn't comfortable for us hearing your conversation. So thank you.
So your relationship with the county administrator, what, and his top staff, what do you weigh on its importance? What's your opinion of that?
I would say on a scale of one to ten, it's a ten. That is a very vital relationship to be successful in this type of organization. I've been very fortunate in the past to have an excellent relationship with the person in that role. And I just think that, you know, we talked about it earlier today, but I just think it's really, really vital to have an open flow of communication with the county administrator and an open exchange of ideas. And, you know, there's more than one way to reach, I think I said there's more than one way to make eight. But, you know, there's going to be more than one way to get to the end result legally. And I just think that it's important to keep the communication open with the county administrator and be on the same page.
What about the county attorney's office's accessibility to the public?
So I think there's a, you know, there's a line you have to walk because in my experience, sometimes the public thinks that the county attorney's role is to provide legal advice to the resident, when in fact, it's to provide legal advice to the board. But that doesn't mean that you don't, you know, exhibit customer service skills and try to lead them down the path that will get them where they need to be without violating any ethical concerns from that county attorney's position.
Relationships with the cities located in Indian River County, Felsmere, Sebastian, all the city of Indian River Shores. What is your opinion on how you as the county attorney representing this board would interact with those?
So in the past, and I disclose this to you in some of the paperwork that I submitted, but I did, on an ad hoc basis, some work for the city of Sebastian. So I was included in some previous lunch, you know, meetings with Pete Sweeney, John Turner, the Sebastian City Attorney, Warren in Felsmere, and John Robach, who I believe is now doing the legal work for Indian River Shores. From our perspective, those meetings were very, very beneficial. I think that we took the time to discuss between us, you know, what types of issues were coming up and tried to, you know, collaborate and find ways that we could, you know, meet together on various issues. I think that's important. I mean, you know, you hear stories about places where the county doesn't get along with the city or vice versa. And, you know, I'm not fully versed in where those issues stand since I've not been in this role, but I think that I would like to see that, you know, resume those meetings. Let's have some conversations and collaborate on things.
Willingness to help or cooperate with the constitutional offices, whether they may have an in-house attorney or not, I know like the supervisor Lexis doesn't have an in-house attorney. But if you're, if you're asked to help any of our constitutions, from the sheriff to the clerk of the court, to the property prepared or to any of them, what is your, how do you feel about that?
Sure. As long as there are not any, you know, restrictions on that, I would have no problem whatsoever trying to provide advice to those constitutional officers. And, you know, they're attached to us for budget, to the county for budgetary reasons, is my understanding. And I do believe, or at least at one point, the sheriff did retain his own attorney. And I think, is it the clerk that is an attorney, perhaps? But yeah, I would have no problem, like, you know, going to meet that person or taking calls or doing whatever I could to help.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Fletcher?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Crawford. Not unlike any other jurisdiction, we do have some growth concerns. We are looking at the urban service boundary. We're doing an assessment there. There may be expansion. We're looking at current and recent annexations and growth challenges in relation to, or the goal to get attainable housing. There are many words for it, but nonetheless, we have major decisions. What experience have you had in that arena?
I've had a lot, quite frankly. I was, when I was with the city of Port St. Lucie, the Tradition area, which is approximately fourteen hundred acres, was transferred to the city. And in, as you know, if you just drive down I-95, you know, you see Amazon, Chaney Brothers, Tamco, Cleveland Clinic expanded. There are multiple developments in that area that, you know, planning and developments. There are DRI, things that have gone on, site plans. So yeah, I have a lot of experience in that. And that, that city, in my opinion, had a very rapid growth process. You know, I'm not sure, it's obviously the decision of the board, what type of growth you want to see here. But I'm just not, I think that the wealth of information I gained while I was in that position would be extremely useful here while we try to decide, you know, how best to grow, but maintain the things that make Indian River County, you know, just a really great place.
Thank you. Looking at all of us, and you've had the opportunity to speak, speak with us one-on-one and studying this county that if appointed or selected, would you, what would you consider our major issue that we're confronted with right now?
I think it's growth. I think the growth issue's pretty big. I think you guys are taking a look at the expansion of the, can you hear me? Sorry about that. I think you're looking at expansion of the urban service boundary. I know you're amending the comp plan. I do think the land development regulations are probably going to have to be analyzed for some tweaks perhaps and some updates. Public records is always an issue, as I mentioned earlier. Trying to think what else would be a major thing. The Indian River Lagoon, ways to, you know, protect it, the septic to sewer, ongoing, you know, project, I think there are somewhere near twenty-five thousand homes in the county that still have to convert. So how do we pay for that and accomplish those conversions, which, you know, would also help the lagoon? Those are the things that are on the top of my mind. I'm sure that's not everything, but those are the things I'm thinking about.
Thank you. Florida, Florida State Statute 119, it's, it's broad, it's very broad, very liberal and face-forwarding as far as availability. We handle our FOIA requests in a certain manner, as compliant to law as we can. Two things, are you familiar with, how familiar are with the 119 as far as the accessibility and how records are handled and it currently is with the attorney's office? But it also is handled with the system. Are you familiar with it?
Extremely familiar with chapter 119. I've conducted trainings for multiple boards on public records requests and open meetings. And, yeah, I mean, I'm very well-versed in that area of the law.
So what would you, what consider, and I know that the courts have deemed what is customary and usual and reasonable amount of time for responsiveness. If we just had a few records that were requested by a constituent there, what would you consider because they haven't given a finite time?
Right. So I think I mentioned to you I'm licensed to practice law in another state, although that license is in escrow. In that state, it is, the statute specifies the amount of time that you have to respond. So in Florida, it's interesting that it says customary and reasonable, right? And so that's a subjective thing. I think it depends to a certain degree on what type of records are being requested. It also depends on who's the custodian of those records. And it also depends on the level of redaction that those records are required, you know, to undergo based on the language in the statute. So for example, let me give you an example, like a personnel file of someone like yourself who's a retired police person or police, what were you, deputy sergeant?
I was a-
Captain?
I was a police officer. I was a detective.
Detective.
Deputy sheriff.
Okay.
And a variety of-
Right.
-manner in law enforcement. So I do have a couple of different protected-
Right.
Backgrounds.
So the bottom line is, someone like yourself, if someone requested your personnel file, then there, that's a heavily, a heavy redaction, in my opinion. So it just, you know, it depends on the nature of the request and what you need to do to those records according to chapter 119 before you produce them. So, you know, it's, it's a subjective, what's customary and reasonable is subjective. Now, do I think you wait six months? No. I think you respond to the requesting party, you know, within a day or two or three, you know, if it's a Friday, then okay, maybe it's Monday or Tuesday, that you acknowledge receipt of those, you know, right away. But depending on the nature of the records, I think what is customary and reasonable, it just depends on what the records are.
Thank you. You had the opportunity to meet with staff and I think you dined with staff-
I did.
-got to know them a little better. If selected or appointed, you'll have the opportunity to be working with that staff. What do you do? I mean, after all, it is a practice that you're, you're holding within, it's limited albeit, but it is a practice. And you need the proper staffing. You have some colleagues there, you have a deputy and an additional attorney and you have assistants to make sure that things in paralegal, to make sure that things get done properly. So you're going to have to get acquainted with them as well. How long before you, you really know them and you, is there any changes that you would see? How long do you think that takes place?
That's a difficult question to answer, honestly.
I know.
But I think, you know, the first step would be to meet with everyone in a group and just say, you know, let them know me first and then, you know, see how I am, see how I think and operate and all that. But then at some point after that, you'd have the one-on-one conversations about, tell me specifically what you're doing, you know, and I think I did ask this question at lunch, but are the projects that are coming in the door assigned based on everything, you know, parks and rec-related goes to this person? Or is it just like that comes in the door and it's like you get one, you get two, you get one, you get, you know? So I need, would really need to know about the workflow and if we've got the right people on the bus, so to speak. I know that phraseology is used sometimes. As far as how long that evaluation would take, I would hope within the first ninety days I could, you know, have a pretty good handle on that.
Thank you. Within about a month or so, if you're selected, you're sitting in that seat and we're out here and conducting our business. As you're listening, you may have the opportunity to say, do you act or do you let us go upstairs and then say, you know, what you really should have done?
So are you asking me if-
Do you have the courage?
To say, hold on a minute, I think we need to like slow the roll on this? Absolutely. I'm not, yes. I mean, I may not go into great detail, but I think, you know, if I'm, if I'm in the position that I say we need to take another look at this before we proceed or, you know, yeah, that, that's something. And quite frankly, you know, meetings flow and it may, something may come up from a comment, you know, public comment that we weren't aware of. So it may be completely something that we didn't look into before that, that moment in time. So, you know, for me to shoot from the hip, from the dais and say, oh, we're not going to do that, we need to do X and not Y, I don't, that's less likely. It's more likely that I'm, I would say something like, okay, there's, with this development, I think we need to take another look at this. It's my recommendation that we take another look at this. Now, you, you guys have the option of saying, no, we want to go on. But I think I'm not discharging my duty to you guys if I don't at least say something. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, you have the rest of the time.
Thank you and good afternoon again. Lately, short-term vacation rentals have been a topic. And with your time in Port St. Lucie with the growth and I can only imagine the short-term rentals, what's your experience with short-term rentals in Port St. Lucie?
So at the time that that started becoming, it kind of became an issue a little bit later in my tenure there. I mean, the rapid growth in that city, can't, I can't understate how, you know, they were building, I think at one point, they had twenty-two thousand homes that had been expected to be permitted. So we didn't have a ton of rental issues when I was in Port St. Lucie. However, I do know there's been some recent legislation that has come down the path regarding, you know, notice and, you know, what owners can charge. And I want to say, I hope I'm not misspeaking, but I want to say that the county implemented a fee structure and some rules like back in 2016 here. But my impression is there, there's probably going to be more that comes from, from legislation and from Tallahassee to kind of, I don't know if they're going to, you know, completely take over this, this issue and occupy the field, so to speak. But I think there'll be some more that will come from Tallahassee regarding that topic. And I know that, you know, there's apparently some Airbnb or vacation by owner rentals here in the county that, you know, have had some issues.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Fletcher mentioned 119 and we've all talked about that. And sometime, that's just a small segment of the county attorney's office. However, sometimes it can be very consuming. And you mentioned how you would redact and do the others. In your experience in other municipalities, Port St. Lucie, to some extent Sebastian, have you ever encountered a particular entity or a particular person that consistently makes public records requests, that consistently tie up county staff's time? And if so, how would you approach that entity and/or individual and hopefully limit and save taxpayer dollars?
Yes. I think anytime you're in this role, you're going to, yes, there's, yes, on multiple fronts, yes, I've had that happen. And so, you know, we do our best to respond and make the individual aware that, you know, you've submitted a lot of responses, you know, we can group them together, treat them as one and try to get it all to you at once. But there are other folks that have submitted legitimate public records requests that we also need to respond to. In my past experience, I actually sat down with that person and tried to, you know, explain, you know, the ins and outs of the process and make sure that the person understood, you know, we are not ignoring you at all. It's just a matter of, you know, whether it's first come, first served or the records that you're seeking, you know, have to be redacted. We have to have the staff time to do the reductions. So I think it's just, you know, a matter of trying to help educate that person or group of people on our process and, you know, that, you're a citizen and you're valuable to us and we're not, we want to be transparent, but it's just, you know, going to take us the time it takes us.
Thank you. And that's a great answer. At Port St. Lucie, you supervise six paralegals and you had a total staff of ten, is that correct?
I had ten attorneys and six paralegals. So I had a total staff of sixteen.
Right. And you worked closely as a charter officer with the other charter officers within the city, which-
Yes.
I guess in layman terms would mean that you weren't afforded particular benefits as your subordinates.
This rain is causing me hearing problems.
Me too.
Ask that again, please. I wasn't receiving the same benefits as my subordinates? Is that what you?
With, yes. The other benefits that are afforded to others that aren't charter officers.
I think that that's a correct statement.
Okay. With respect to FEMA, any experience with FEMA and any experience working with the city manager, in this case, the county administrator, in number one, dealing with the crises and number two, recovering any potential dollars that are outlined?
Yes. I was on the command staff for the emergency operations center for the city of Port St. Lucie. I'm also FEMA certified. And I'd have to look that up because they have, you know, there's a certain number that allocated to the certification that I hold. And then, yes, we, we were trained on how to submit what they call DAR, D-A-R, form to FEMA to re, you know, to recover funds for hours' work for those folks that needed to work during the emergency.
Even though, yeah, even though that's probably a task by officer management budget, but you did work closely as the attorney with the OMB officer.
Absolutely.
Great. Any, I know that I may have read a brief on, there was an issue a few years ago with solid waste pickup in Port St. Lucie.
Mm-hmm. There was.
Can you shed some light on your involvement in that?
Yes. I hope they, if they're watching, they don't hate me, but yes. So, yeah, we had, at that time, we had a solid waste provider who was, was picking up both recyclables and, you know, regular solid waste, I think it was two days a week. And that contract was nearing its end and, in my view, should have been rebid. It was what I would call an Evergreen contract, which is, you know, I think it was on its fourteenth year. And so I had a pretty strong, you know, I've got a procurement background, so I had a pretty strong opinion that that needed to be bid out. For multiple reasons, that was, that didn't happen. We renegotiated a contract with that solid waste provider, which is not the same one that's in this county, just for clarification. And, but the problem, and we had to work with the county, the problem was that the cost increased and the provider decreased the level of service that was only going to pick up like one day. Well, then COVID came along and they were having staffing shortages and other problems. And quite frankly, the whole solid waste collection process down there became really bad. And there were, you know, flies and, I'm from Kentucky, so I can say it, critters accumulating around the trash and just a lot of, you know, a lot of complaints. And so we tried to implement a fee schedule against the vendor to try to get them to correct some of the problems. That didn't work. It ended up in litigation. I believe the litigation was settled at mediation or resolved out of court. And then they, the city went back and rebid that and now has a new provider.
Right. I think we're all somewhat aware of that. And finally, you talked about the staff of attorneys that you had and the paralegals that you had. We're a little different in that we don't have as many, obviously. So I think in one of your forecasts or one of your ninety days or sixty days, you talked about meeting with staff. So the question would be, how do we reduce any external counsel fees? Would that be by you assimilating a team that, let's say, one person has a specialty in real estate, the other in environmental dealings or what? How would you choose your team of attorneys as well as bring to this body a reduction in external counsel cost?
So to be honest, I've seen the budget numbers, the proposed budget numbers for the upcoming budget, but I've only seen like the grand total. I haven't, I haven't looked at, you know, the line item. But I think that the key is you try to minimize outside counsel in all cases. Now, there are some situations that you can't do that or it's not prudent to do. Collective bargaining, for example, is an area that I very strongly believe needs to be outsourced. And, but, you know, to the extent you have the tools to handle the issue in-house- And, but, you know, to the extent you have the tools to handle the issue in-house, that's my, that's my goal, is to handle it in-house. I want to say during the first two years in Port St. Lucie, I've reduced the outside counsel budget significantly from like $3 million to $250,000. And the same is true at Indian River State College.
Well, thank you very much, and I yield my time.
All right. Do you have any questions of us?
I don't think so. I had very nice conversations with everyone this morning. I asked all the questions I had then. I want to thank you guys all very, very much for allowing me to come and have the opportunity to talk to you. Even if I'm not successful, it's been a complete honor to be here today and to go through this process. So I don't think I have any questions.
Okay. Thank you so much. Doug?
Appreciate that. If you can give me a few minutes just to debrief with your candidate and then if you want to take public comment, that's fine, I can do that and I'll come back in and join in the deliberation conversations from there.
What do you guys want to do? Do you want to take another break? Okay, we'll take another break. You do your thing, come back, and then we'll start public comment and go from there.
Great, that works. Okay, super.
Fantastic.
Okay.
We will be on recess for a few minutes. Fantastic. We will be on recess for a few minutes. We are going to call the meeting back to order, and we will be taking public comments. Before we start public comments, public comments will be limited to three minutes. We will have a timer on the screens, so it's very clear for everyone. And with that, anybody from the public that would like to speak regarding the county attorney search, you're welcome to come up and do so at this time. Okay?
Two podiums.
Seeing none, we will move on to the substantive portion of our meeting. Doug?
Thank you. I often joke with my candidates and with my clients that this is somewhat like selecting the pope. We never know if there's blue smoke, or black smoke, or gray smoke coming out of the process. But the thoughts are, for you as a group to deliberate about your candidates today, we've done this a couple of different ways. In many of the communities that I've worked with, we often just accept to allow, you all see and hear things differently and react to different things. And so without getting caught up in the trappings of somebody making an official motion or something of that nature, and then you kind of feel locked into those efforts, we typically encourage our boards to just have a little bit of a dialogue in terms of thoughts and impressions that they have about candidates to provide some insight, and that may encourage some dialogue amongst yourselves, or you may see things, or someone may raise an issue that maybe another candidate or another commissioner had not necessarily thought through, and it encourages that dialogue. So we often encourage you to have that type of dialogue first, and then at that point, once kind of the discussion has landed, if there's a desire to advance a candidate going forward, then we go into kind of formal motions. I'm also here to assist if there's any questions or background. I know we've given you a wealth of information that you've been trying to digest, but if there's anything I can do to assist in that effort, I'm here really just to help you facilitate as you go through this next step in the process.
Okay. Thank you. So commissioners, at this time, we're gonna, I guess, just have an open conversation about the candidates and how we may or may not want to move forward. For me, I, you know, enjoyed speaking with both candidates. I believe that the experience and depth of field for Ms. Schuler kind of made her rise to the top for me. Also, one of my requirements, as we talked about earlier, was having that bar certification. So I think that is, I strongly feel that that's very important, and she does have that. Also, I had several unsolicited references for her from some of my contacts in the Tallahassee community, specifically from neighbors Givlin and Nickerson. As you guys know, I've worked there before, and there were several of those attorneys that called to give her very high marks, having worked with her, as well as the clerk. Our local clerk actually knows the clerk in Liberty County and shared some kind and glowing remarks from her regarding her as well. Also had a commissioner, or a prior commissioner from Bay County, reach out regarding Mrs. Schuler and interacting with her. It's just being very even-keeled, very professional, and very, they had a lot of confidence in her abilities. So I also believe that Ms. Crawford has some good experience, and, you know, kind of across-the-board experience. We had a great conversation, but for me, that's kind of where I am, and I wanted to share some of those unsolicited references that reached out to me independently of this process. I don't know if somebody wants to jump in, or if we want to start down here with Commissioner Lohr, since we started with Commissioner Moss, or with the questions, or...
I'll just say that I do agree with you on that. I was especially impressed by her work with FEMA. It's highly unusual that you would get or win a second request, and getting half a million dollars for a fiscally constrained county is quite an accomplishment. I was very impressed by that. And also her first-year plan. I like the specificity of it. She doesn't, she didn't rely on generalities in her plan or in her speech. She was very professional, considering she had huge distractions right behind her. She had, you know, two people having a conversation, but she was very professional, and we all could see that. But she remained very professional, unshaken, just stayed right, on target with everything that she wanted to convey, and I was impressed by that, you know, handling that. She just, I liked it also that she comes from the same size county, so she understands, you know, where we're going with this, and that she wants to be here, you know, that she really looks forward to being here. I was impressed by that in my conversation with her. So I agree with you, Madam Chair, and thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Ehrman?
Madam Chairman, I think they both were excellent. They're both excellent candidates. I think we were fortunate to have both of them. I thought we would have had a lot more, but I think that the candidates that we had, and these two candidates that applied were sincere, were about coming to here to Indian River County, working here with us and for us, and I appreciate their efforts to do so. I too was impressed with Mrs. Schuler. Even this morning, some of the pointed questions that I asked, and the questions that we asked her, she didn't shy away from any of them. She answered the questions directly and with lots of specificity. I think that's how I need to say that. I am impressed with the fact of what the question that Commissioner Lohr brought up about her getting the, you know, going back basically for the double-bar exam with her county and city government. She has a vast amount of experience, it looks like, in county and city government, and even school board, I guess, but we won't tell anybody that. But I just thought her questions were better answered this morning and this afternoon. Ms. Crawford, I think, is outstanding. I'd love to have her on board, too. If we could hire both of them in different capacities, that would be awesome. But I would have to go with Mrs. Schuler.
Gentlemen on this end, anything?
Madam Chair, I'll say a few things. Like you, I've contacted others, and others have contacted me, particularly about Ms. Schuler, not as much as Ms. Crawford. One thing I want to say about both of these candidates, and I speak my mind as most of the time, is that out of the pool of candidates that we had, these two candidates were strong enough to come down and interview with us, even though we have a select group in this community that unilaterally emailed all of the candidates with some very nasty things that does not shine a light on this county, and does not reflect this county, to be quite frank with you. But for somebody representing a particular organization to unilaterally send, I've never heard of that before. Now, if I'm a candidate throughout the state, or country for that matter, and I'm getting bombarded with emails, do I want to come to Indian River County? Am I going to face, you know, the same situation? So I'm embarrassed by that, and that was obviously why some of my questions were pointed. With respect to Ms. Crawford, I think that, absent some of the private sector, public sector, and some of the things that she explained to us, or me individually, makes her an inferior candidate to Ms. Schuler. That being said, Ms. Schuler does also, I think she possesses what we need. We're not going to have the perfect applicant with every discipline in the law. One concern, though, is geographics. She has close ties to Bay and Liberty County, which gives me a little hesitation on offering her a contract. That may be resolved with a particular language in the contract, perhaps? I'm not certain. But overall, again, with the two candidates that had the guts to appear here, I'm very proud of both of them for taking that opportunity. So I'm still kind of, part of me wants to say, what would have happened had the other candidates came? And that is something we'll never know because of interference. We'll never know that. Does that mean we have to take what we perceive as the best of the two? I'm not so sure that that is the cause or ever. However, it does appear that with some of the questions that Ms. Schuler answered, she does appear to fit the four squares that we're looking for. So that's where I'm at.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Flesher?
Madam Chair, thank you. And it's, what happens here? You spoke first, but I'm gonna say some of the same comments. What do they call us? The law enforcement?
Caucus.
Caucus, caucus, that's it. I think it comes from the fact that, and I'm sure the county administrator can attest, that we go deep and wide on our concerns about people's backgrounds, and where they are, and what they're doing, and where they've come from. I, not taking away from anybody else, but I would say that, I think I revealed it, we go pretty deep. Such being the case, I spoke with a lot of people, a lot of people from the jurisdictions. And full disclosure, I'm more familiar with one of the candidates. One of the candidates is local. I do feel the same concerns, that we did not have the opportunity to see the other candidates that were vetted before we got here, before we got today's date, and it's very, very unfortunate, and the public should know, that, you know, when we discussed 119, and we discussed many of the aspects of the job upstairs and here, it was about the contamination of the process. It was very unsettling, unethical, unprofessional. I understand, it was pointed out by one of the applicants, that, you know, we work for the county government. The county government works for the people, but the county attorney works for this board, not for individuals in the community. If they want representation, they can have representation. They facilitate, and that's the line that was pushed. I was extremely disturbed when I read some of the written information that was forwarded to the other candidates. There are a couple that I wanted to meet. There are a couple that had very good, and thank you for finding them and vetting them, but we did not have the opportunity. We were robbed, clearly stated, by somebody's overbearingness. They felt that they were the expert in the field. We hired an expert, and then they found candidates. And we should have been given the opportunity to be able to interview all of the applicants. Miraculously, after the correspondence had gone out to all of the candidates, that some of the candidates, maybe it's coincidence, but we lost candidates. They withdrew their interest. Can you imagine that? Going through a process, getting an email, and saying, oh, no longer interested. I'm doing something else. Now, further look upon those candidates, they did not find another opportunity, they just didn't want this one, based on the contaminatory information, and I feel certain about that. Enough of that. As far as the backgrounds, and you mentioned that you were contacted, contacted, I was very much contacted in my search, and I actually, I told one of the candidates that, you know, it actually drew concern that so many people from your jurisdiction called, contacted, expressed. After all, if you're so satisfied, if you admire this individual for what they're doing within your jurisdiction that's not so close to us, why do you want to ensure that they get glowing reports of their acceptance to leave that jurisdiction to our jurisdiction? It just was, it caused me pause, that they were so interested to have that person here. So much so, I said, uh-oh, are these paid endorsements? No, they weren't, and they're valid endorsements. And I concur with my colleagues. While I did have a preference going into this, I'll fully admit that, having known one of the applicants, I have to say that Counselor Jennifer Schuler has definitely rose to the top in my heart, as a very sincere, knowledgeable, well-suited individual, and she's willing to start as soon as she can. I have to tell you that I'm very impressed with our other applicant, so much so that I think I heard something about it. Gee, that would be great if she would hire her, too. Because they're both good candidates, but after all of the vetting consideration, and just allowing all of the, and again, they both had the courage to come after, and the public, I guess we should show those, we can do our own public records release and show how nasty the individuals were who wrote contaminatory statements to our applicants. I believe it was very disingenuous and unfair to even interfere with the process, and the allegations' information was not all appropriate or accurate, but nonetheless, it was done. But in the end, with all of that, our conversations upstairs, and what was presented before us, I believe that Jennifer Schuler will make a fine choice and selection.
Fantastic. All right. So it seems pretty, it seems pretty clear. I think what we would need is a motion to move forward with contract negotiation and go from there.
Second?
I have a motion by Commissioner Lohr, and a second by Commissioner Flesher. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You know, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
That's a great start, to have a unanimous decision for somebody that's going to be representing all of us.
I agree. I am very excited. And I appreciate everybody's time today, on a staff level, on a commission level. Doug, I appreciate your time and the candidates' time. I know it has been a long day, so since that was all of our agenda, if there is nothing else, and it's Friday, happy birthday, Susan.
Madam Chair, just for next steps, so we are here, obviously, to assist you in whatever fashion. Some of my clients will ask me to work with a designated representative, whether that's the chair or someone else, to work through terms and conditions, just to make sure we've got an agreement, and then we normally would have that turned back over to you for developing into a formal employment agreement. But if you would like me to assist you in that effort, I just need to know what direction you need to go, so I know whether I'm working with them, or the county's going to be working with your candidate directly.
No.
Is that what you guys want to do? Have Doug work through the process with HR? Okay. Okay.
Right.
Okay. We will have Suzanne and yourself work that out, and we will get with Ms. Schuler and go from there. Madam Chair, the final number, as far as compensation and agreement, that will come
back to us?
Yes. The contract, the final contract will come back to us for approval of all the terms and what was negotiated.
I've certainly worked with Susan and your staff before, so I can get with her, and she's been involved tangentially in this process. She knows the details, and so I just want to advise the candidates as to what the next steps will be.
Yes.
So I'll coordinate with her, and then I'll be in the background as necessary to help you get across the finish line. But to your point, yes. At the end of the day, Commissioner, there will be a formal employment agreement that will be drafted by the county that will come back to you as a board for formal ratification, and that's when things become final.
And hopefully, even though I know this would be very quick, that could be on our August 20th meeting.
I know you've got one on the 20th. Most of the time, this does not take, you know, you obviously have some background from both your candidates about their expectations.
Hence, Suzanne, and whomever else is listening to this.
You don't work quick?
We try to get you across the finish line as quickly as we can, absolutely.
Madam Chair, I think that at this point, congratulations to Counselor Jennifer Schuler for the offer of, and the invitation to be part of this great government.
Yes. We're very excited. All right. With that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, so everybody can go enjoy their weekend, and again, happy birthday, Susan, and happy Friday, everybody, and congratulations, Ms. Schuler. We're excited to have you aboard. With that, we stand adjourned.